It's six o'clock and we will commence the October 3rd meeting of Humboldt County Planning Commission and we will start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Present.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Bongio.
Here.
Commissioner McHaver.
Here.
And Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Thank you.
And I'd ask the Director if there's been any modifications to the published agenda.
We have one modification, we would like to have item number F3 removed from consent and we will discuss the reason for that at the time of the public hearing. And then there are also a number of supplementals on the dais, there is a supplemental for item F2, F3, F4, and F5, and there is a letter for the hemp workshop.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move along to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes for past meetings. And what we have is the meeting of September 5th, 2019. Has everyone had an opportunity to review that? Are there any edits, clarifications, or additions thereto? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Move approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman Epstein, due to absence. And next item that we have is a public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight. Anyone wishing to speak on any item under the purview of this commission, which is land use items, you may approach the podium at this time. And I would, we have a fairly lengthy agenda, so I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Ken Swawsky, there's a land use item that I ran into the other day that I asked staff about, but I haven't heard any follow-up. Sometime back, the Timber Heritage Association had a certain supervisor which was trying to throw some monkey wrenches into what they do out there at the Timber Heritage Association. So, I wanted to go apples and apples, I wanted to see what kind of permits were required. And so, I have not been able to get from Coastal Commission or your staff, any permit for a light kind function, which is the kinetic scope array. So, again, I'm asking staff to check into that, to see if there is a permit for that. My understanding is that it was, it's a neat function, but everything should be permitted. My understanding is there are concerns that some of the area where it goes is going over the top of some of our wallflowers, some of our endangered species, and some habitat out there. So, I think it's appropriate that everybody play in the same ballgame and cross their t's and dot their i's. So, I'm again requesting staff look into that, and if there is a permit, I'd be happy to take a look at it. If there's not one, then I think that's something that needs a permit, and if it's exempt, I'd like to also know that. I did wish to make a few comments on, well, it's on the cannabis business, and a lot of permitting you folks do here. So, these are general comments, not on any specific project. But, the fatal flaw in anything is when planning's driven by financial interest. We have a Measure S tax, and the public perception is, and I will still stand by that, that a lot of the decisions here are made to enable the county to have as many permits out there. Setbacks, requirements are waived, lack of consideration for the community districts, which is a big thing, and no matter what, we have planning in community areas, they continually come in here, such as Fortuna, people in Glendale area, and of course, the ever-living buck seems to be the driving concern here, rather than the concern of the people in these community areas. And as long as that happens, I will have some angst regarding the process, and I object to a lot of that. The other thing is the overall, what is happening in the cannabis business. Of course, you'll have people here probably tonight, and a lot of them say it's making, it's the race to the bottom. My opinion, yes it is. As soon as they clean up a few problems they have down south with drift from pesticide and things like that, your planning process will go down to next to nothing, and I'm guessing by next year, they will have those things taken care of. And at that time, the people who came in here, and I think Rex Bowen was here a few minutes ago, may still be here, but he said, "Be careful what you ask for, when you ask to be permitted, you ask to be legal, you ask to be taxed." They asked for it, they got it, and now they're not happy. I was the one who wrote the opposition to the Measure S, and so I will stand behind that one. As far as I'm concerned, that particular tax probably should be repealed. It may be deemed illegal, and I'm hoping that's what happens. So, give these people a chance without being taxed into the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker, good comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? On items not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thomas Mulder, CEO, Humboldt Redwood Healing, licensed farmer. I didn't even plan on speaking at this matter here, but just the previous speaker. Those of us that are permitted and licensed, there's a lot of us that are happy, we appreciate the county working with us, and we don't see a race to the bottom, we actually see building sustainability. I speak on, multiple times, my objective in working with the county and working with distribution all over the state, is building something that's sustainable, and we can pass on to the next generation. I want my children to have the ability to pick up the business if they so choose, and let's remember that, that there is many of us here for sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment on non-agendized items tonight? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close that section of the public comment, and we'll move along to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, the first item is the Honeydew Ranch LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Honeydew area. Is there anyone in the audience, or any of the Commissioners, who would like to have this pulled for a full public hearing? Seeing some hands, we will pull that for a public hearing. Next item on the consent is the Full Moon Farms Conditional Use Permit in the Dinsmore area. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have this pulled for a full public hearing? Anyone in the audience, any of the Commissioners? Seeing no one, we will leave that on the consent. The next item is the HUMFDC LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Miranda area, and that has, is there anyone in the audience who are going to speak in opposition to that? Seeing a hand, that will go to a public hearing. Next item is the Ganjery LLC Conditional Use Permit in the McKinleyville area. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to have that pulled from the consent and have a full public hearing on it?
I would.
Alright, that will go for a public hearing. Commissioner O'Neil requests that. Next item on the agenda is the Jim Fortato Partial Map Subdivision in the Field Book area. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have that pulled from the consent and have a full public hearing? Please give me a show of hands, or any indication, any of the Commissioners? Seeing no one, that will stay on the consent. And the next item on the consent is the County of Humboldt General Plan Conformance Review, having to do with a surplus parcel. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have this pulled from the consent and have a full public hearing on that? Any of the Commissioners? Seeing no one, we'll leave it on the consent. Next item is a, was on the public hearing side of the agenda, but it has to do with the Samoa Pacific Group Coastal Development Permit and CUP in the Samoa area. Is there anyone in the audience going to speak in opposition to staff recommendation and like to have this pulled from the consent for a full public hearing? Anyone in the audience? Any of the Commissioners? Seeing no one, that will go to the consent. And I think that does it, because our last item is a workshop. So, what I have on the consent is consent item number two, the Full Moon Farms will be on the consent. The Jim Fortato Partial Map will be on the consent. The County of Humboldt General Plan Conformance Review on Lucas Street will be on the consent. And the Samoa Pacific Group Coastal Development Permit will be on the consent. Brian.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move items two, five, and six on the consent agenda, as well as item H1 for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Director?
Thank you, I just don't want to let the moment pass to you quickly, since item H1 was going to be presented tonight by Michael Wheeler, and he is retiring tomorrow, so tonight would have been his last presentation, and you just stared him at that.[682.32][682.32](Laughter). But, it's good to acknowledge 24 years of service.[688.73][688.73](Applause).
Congratulations, Michael, I remember years ago.
Thank you.
And with that, if your staff could give us a presentation on the Honeydew Ranch Conditional Use Permit, we will have a public hearing on this topic.
My name is Megan Ryan, Senior Planner, and I am the assigned planner for the Honeydew Ranch LLC Conditional Use Permit and Special Permit Project. The proposed project is a conditional use permit to authorize continued cultivation of 16,175 square feet of mixed light cannabis cultivation, and also a special permit to authorize a 14,000 square foot wholesale nursery. The project includes development, a processing, onsite processing facility, and a proposed two-story structure of 5,000 square foot footprint, and a 3 million gallon rainwater catchment pond. That is the application that's being considered this evening, and it, SEQA requires consideration of the project as a whole. The initial study and a mitigated negative declaration for the project was completed. The whole project includes the proposed RRR, the relocation sites that are proposed to come to the property as a part of the project, that would allow for up to eight acres of total cultivation. Currently, the site is developed with a single-family residence, agricultural accessory structures, including eight greenhouses. There are, the applicant is proposing 28 additional greenhouses for a total of 180,000 square feet of cultivation. This would include the square footage for the wholesale nursery. The project as a whole, if, that was considered under SEQA, if all the relocation sites came to this parcel, would not exceed approximately 348,000 square feet at full build-out, due to some concise constraints that were identified in the wetland delineation. Total square footage is closer to 300,000, or about 6.9 acres. As I mentioned, they are proposing a two-story 10,000 square foot processing facility with a maximum of 23 employees during peak operations. 12 to 18 would be temporary seasonal employees. Power to the parcels provided by PG&E. The project also includes the rainwater catchment pond. Currently, for domestic and irrigation uses, a point, two points of diversion are used. The applicant is proposing to move off of the diversions as part of the project and use the pond solely for irrigation. This is the aerial of the site currently. Showing the existing greenhouses, residents, and agricultural, the other agriculture accessory structures, including two barns. The site plan included in your packet this evening shows the build-out of the site and placement of all the greenhouses. The process, or the property is accessed off of Old Henley Ranch Road. It is approximately .6 miles from the intersection of Matol Road on Applewood Road, and then to Old Henley Ranch Road. Neighboring projects to this project, there are concerns that have been brought forward regarding increased road use and impacts to the roads. Additional, in addition to intersection improvements that we typically see on our, on the cannabis projects, we're also requiring the applicant to submit a traffic management plan and participate in a road maintenance association, and/or pay fair share costs of road maintenance for the use of the road to the site. There is approximately 40 acres of prime agricultural soils on the property, at which 20% of that is the eight acres. Slops are less than 15%, which are requirements for new cultivation, and when we look at the retirement sites, those are considerations, if this is a viable site for projects to come essentially from other sites that are in the hills and down to this property. The Mirallette and NSO, Mirallette is within .39 miles, and NSO's Northern Spotted Owls more than two miles away. The power is provided by PG&E with backup generators only. And again, the wetland delineation included in your staff report includes information regarding setbacks and identification of where those wetlands are, the Matol River. The setbacks are consistent with the state cannabis policy, with the regional, or the state water resources control board and county regulations. The RRR sites that are proposed at this current time, nine retirement sites have been identified. Two zoning clearance certificates for 40,000 square feet have been approved, and so that is what is in the eight greenhouses currently on the site. The site constraints limit the total square footage to around 301,000 square feet. The relocation of the additional cultivation sites would not be approved until the rainwater catchment pond is constructed, filled, and the stream diversions are not necessary. The processing onsite is not allowed until the facility is built and roads are maintained. And, so I'll conclude there, it's a fast presentation, but I, we did want to make clear that the application in front of the commission tonight for consideration is the conditional use permit for the existing cultivation and the wholesale nursery. However, we are asking for consideration and adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, which does include the whole of the project. Have you to answer any questions?
Does Commissioners have any questions on staff report? If not, then we will open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this project, please approach the podium at this time. And what I would ask, if it works out well, would be to have the applicant come in at the end of the comment period, so that if there are any questions that have come up during the public comment, perhaps Commissioners could get some questions answered. If not, we won't bring the applicant back in at a later date. So, with that, we'll open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please approach the podium at this time.
Well, that's quite the project. Eight acres. Matol area is one of the more impaired watersheds around, 3 million gallons of water pulled out. The cumulative impacts that you've had within this area are horrendous. I can't believe that actually the county would even be considering this kind of project in this watershed. Obviously, the water drains into the Matol River, unless that isn't the Matol River I'm kind of looking at, but it says it is. And I've always supported the RRR, but to put it in an impaired watershed such as Matol down there, with all the efforts that the people are trying to do to restore these rivers and bring these watersheds back, I find this nothing but greed. Greed and weed, I guess that's what it is, so it'll probably get rubber stamped and put on through. I couldn't let it go through on consent without something of this magnitude and the kind of thing of this size being at least brought forward to your attention. Maybe you feel this is appropriate kind of project for this kind of area, I do not.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please. Anyone else wishing to comment, please approach the podium.
I live next door, and I think this is really wrong, and if it's okay, I'd just like to read this, because I'm really nervous.
Go ahead.
Why is the government making everyone in the hills come down into the valley, so that the industry is pressing so heavily on one area?
Could you speak in the microphone a little bit, please? Thank you.
Why is the government making everyone in the hills come down into the valley, so that the industry is pressing heavily so on one area? It seems unfair to the impacted receiving neighborhoods, and unfair to people who have been living and working sustainably in the hills for many years. If there are bad actors in the hills or in the valley, they should be curtailed, but why hassle those who are not bad actors? Why is the government encouraging large growers to get huge, turning small sustainable farms into oversized agribusiness that overimpacts our rural environment? There are many comments about what is small, medium, or large. Rule of thumb, eight greenhouses on 40 acres in the middle of a road with 15 different, much smaller properties on it, is large. If what you are doing on your property is impacting your neighbors to the point of making them have trouble sleeping or working outdoors, from fans, generators, equipment noises, or degrading the quality of the road to the point they are having to get tires and suspension more often, and your workers are trespassing on their property after already being asked not to, you are too big. Approving an increase on this is unconscionable. Please note that we did not complain about the eight greenhouses, we're complaining about the expansion. Why are you not protecting all your citizens' property and human rights? We have five households in our small neighborhood, and, that are not pot growers and whose rights are being trampled on. You are changing our quiet peaceful road into a major thoroughfare for many cars, trucks, and oversized vehicles, with no enforcement on proper road care. A sixth household is now selling out because she cannot sleep from the noise level. I am not against farms, and I am not against pot. I am against uncontrolled growth and unenforced rules to protect our roads and water and quality of life. I am also against unreasonable rules that are making small farms unable to keep up with fees and paperwork to simply continue farming, when they are not harming anyone, while allowing big farms, who can pay big fees and pay people to do their paperwork, to continue to grow larger and larger. It's not right. I also want to protest the notices sent out that are impossible to understand without hours of studying, contacting others to help understand. This lady was very nice to try to help me understand a lot of things, but I'm an educated person, and I can't understand your language. It's like a different language. The only way to stop this overgrowth is to write multiple letters, attend multiple hearings, and participate in what is a full-time job, just to protect what I think we have elected our officials and pay our taxes, to protect for us. It is exhausting and depressing and unfair, especially to our senior citizens.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment, please approach the podium. Anyone wishing to comment? Is the applicant wishing to approach the podium?
Good evening, Commissioners. Director Ford, Planning Department. My name's Steve Doyle, I'm a licensed contractor. I own Six Rivers Construction and Consulting, with a C-12 license. I work on the project with Honeydew Farms for the site management and the restoration work that we're working on right now. As we stand, we look at a very large project, we do, but if you get out and you look at the projects that we're restoring, you would be able to see this as less of an impact of what we're trying to achieve totally. We have nine projects that are from Sprout Creek to Salmon Creek to Harris Ranch, and bringing these projects here to this confined site, which, the footprint itself, you can lay down the greenhouses on the existing ground. There'll be limited amount of dirt work. The dirt work we're doing is a 3 million rain catchment pond, off-stream. It is not going to be utilized by the Matol River. You can see the project right above, our project also is being constructed with a 3 million gallon rain catchment pond. We are lessening the impact on the Matol River by us being able to be granted, to have this project continue to move forward, and be able to lessen the impact as a whole of Humboldt County versus one specific small area in Humboldt County, Honeydew, California. No disrespect, but we are impacting the entire county, not just one small area. I understand the concerns as far as the road issues. The road has been graded, compacted, and ruled. From Mr. King, whose project's right above ours, the road is a category four-plus, 23 feet wide. We will work to control the amount of traffic that will be on this road. We will work together as a community to keep the impact down. We will maintenance the road. Cody and I have already talked about that, Mr. King's project right above us. And the applicant has been fantastic to work for. We have done everything Director Ford and the planning staff has asked us to do. We have been extremely patient. We have two Triple Rs that we did last year in Sprout Creek, are sitting there. I'm completing a project right now in Dutyville. Erosion control got wrapped up today, that project will be ready. Once we get approval from the Commissioners, we will be able to decommission the remaining Triple R projects that are highly invasive to the environment compared to Honeydew Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission and Director Ford and staff for all the work that they've also put into this project. As you guys can see in your packet, we have completed multiple studies. We have looked at every environmental aspect of this project. We have, as everybody else has in this county, created the train as we were building the tracks. And we have really, really tried to take into consideration everything that we're doing with this project. We have hours of planning, we have hours of meeting with engineers and developing the things that will help the environment versus hinder the environment. And that's really what our goal is here. The restoration project that Steve spoke about in Sprout Creek was one of the original projects that called issue out in Sprout Creek, been fully restored, has had no cultivation going on it for three years. The applicant shut down that project as soon as we entered this process, with good faith that he would be able to move this to Honeydew. Also, the project that was, is being restored in Dutyville is about 30% grade. There's been multiple agencies in our community that have had issues with this. They are ecstatic that we're moving forward with these restoration projects. We're controlling sediment delivery into our creeks and streams. We are really going to do everything that we possibly can to make sure that our environment is not impacted any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
My name's Joel Munchke, I'm a civil engineer with Stillwater Sciences. I have done a lot of the planning and design work on this property, as well as the three RRR properties that are in process, and there's another four or five that we're starting the designs on those. And these are, they're not small RRRs, these are, you know, each one is near $100,000, and they're not, we haven't been just restoring, you know, recent cultivation, we've been restoring, you know, legacy timber harvest issues, old roads, landings from, you know, previous owners. So, there's been a very strong, good faith effort by the applicant and the other RRRs that are going to move here. that are going to move here to make huge differences. The property in Sprout Creek actually was in Indian Creek, so Sprout Creek Community, Indian Creek Watershed, that's a very important fish-bearing stream. This was one of the few large cultivation sites in that, in that area. So that was a huge, important project from kind of the, you know, the local environmental fish habitat issues. There's properties in Matol Canyon Creek, Wilder Ridge, Salmon Creek area that are all going to be happening in the next few years as a result of this project. You know, I've been on this site several times. It's just, you know, it's a very nearly flat site, perfect for agricultural activity. So, you know, it's, it's, I, we'll be honest, you know, I grew up, born and raised around here, and, you know, it is, it's hard to see progress sometimes, but from an overall environmental standpoint, you know, this, this is, is much better than, than what we have with these, you know, properties out in the hills. And, and this is resulting in, you know, true restoration of, you know, nine for now properties and potentially more in the future. So I plan to, you know, be involved closely with making sure that, you know, the pond is constructed properly, that the water system is set up to ensure that no water is taken out of the Matol River during the dry season. And so, yeah, that's, that's what I have to say about this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment on the project tonight? Please approach the podium. Anyone? See, no one. We'll close this section of public comment, and we'll bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion. Commissioners?
I have a question for staff. Was the three restoration projects at Triple Rs, were they tied to this expansion? Was, were, were they for some other purpose?
Yeah, through, through the chair, I'm not sure, the three restoration projects?
They were talking about three in Sprout Creek in different areas. Were they directly tied to the ability to expand on this site?
So, yes, to answer that question, the way that the RRR program works, which is the retirement remediation and relocation, is that you have to have a site that is, you know, not able to be permitted because it's not meeting the environmental requirements of either the state or the county. And those can go onto other sites that are eligible to receive them. Those retirement sites that they're talking about are dedicated right now for this property.
For this expansion? For the expansion on this property, or?
Yes, that is correct. There is no requirement that they go to the specific site, though. So those retirement sites, if they were able to find a different site that would be able to accommodate them, there's nothing preventing them from going to a different location. This is, however, a location that meets the requirements that the ordinance was, you know, written to encourage those sites to, to be located on, which are that they're flat agricultural sites with decent access, that are not facing the same habitat issues that many of those sites up in the hills that, you know, have been problematic are facing.
The other question I have is regarding the two-story building and what that consists of. Is that a metal building? Is it going to have offices? What, what is that construction?
I would defer that to the agent. They have submitted building plans to the building department, but I don't have them in front of me. But it would be for housing, processing, drying, trimming, and I think offices, but I'll let Steve answer that.
Come forward.
Thank you. We have put a deposit down on an engineered steel building that will have a concrete floor, and it will be insulated so that it's self-contained. It will have smell-prohibiting measures taken so that we're not, and when we're drying and processing in that facility, that it's not disturbing our neighbors. We're trying to upgrade our infrastructure so that we're not disturbing our neighbors. That would be the ultimate goal here by having the ability to build the new structure. We have the, the square footage to be able to implement those extra measures.
Where on the site is the two-story building going?
Maybe it's going to go, this is the pre-listing farm right here. These two cars you would see would be.
Yeah, if you could come back and speak into the microphone, we, we're being videoed, and so the people who are maybe watching on TV, they can't, they won't be able to understand you. So I think they have a, you have a arrow?
Oh, do I have?
Laser?
As you can see, like, right above.
No.
I can point with it. So it'd be the pink highlighted box directly above the parking structure that's there, the parking area. That is being proposed to have one five thousand square foot building built now with the proposal of possibly adding an additional structure if needed in the future. But it was included in our SEQA study as ten thousand square feet.
Thank you. Alan?
So I'm, I've read all the studies and looked at all of it, and somehow I just can't fathom this much marijuana being grown in one place anywhere. I'm, I'm thinking the impacts are probably better than what they were in all the individual grows out in the hills, but the impacts to all the neighbors around this, I think, are, we need to really take into consideration because this is pretty intensive in comparison to what goes on. I know this country. I've spent a lot of time out there, and I, I just can't see this big of a grow happening out there. I'll, I have two specific questions. One's the water. It didn't, three million gallons is a lot of water, but it doesn't seem like it's even close to what you would need to do this, considering we've had projects that were considerably smaller and had million gallon storage. So I made a couple calls, talked to some people that are in the industry, and they kind of agreed with me that, but they didn't know the specifics, and that's fair. I don't know all the specifics either, and they had a water study done, but it just doesn't seem feasible. So if they run short, water's probably going to come from the river or stream somehow, and that is a very impacted waterway. So I have concerns there. And the other one is with the mixed light for the neighbors. Is there going to be tarping, or what's going to be done to prevent them from having to see that all night long? So I didn't see anything on that. Maybe I missed it, but those are my concerns.
Any response from staff on that, please?
Sure, if I could. The, those, the two concerns that I think you raised, the water. You know, one of the things to, that this is, I think that's important to mention here is that, you know, this project, the application in front of you is not to approve all of these retirement relocation sites. Those will happen potentially administratively if the SEQA document is adopted, right? And so one of the things that we do not yet have is the specific operations plans for each of those retire, relocation projects that could come here. But as a general rule, you know, we, we typically see roughly five hundred thousand gallons of water used per acre of cannabis. And, you know, that can obviously vary what, substantially depending on what, you know, people are doing with their cultivation methods and everything. But that would allow, using that as a basic rule, would allow up to six acres on the site for three million gallons, right? So one of the things that we would need to look at in approving those projects, if the SEQA document is, is adopted, would be those water plans for each of those projects and those water budgets to see if they're able to be approved. So it is true that we don't have the specifics of each of those sites just yet. So the other thing I want to mention is the mixed light. It is a requirement for all mixed light projects that they fully shield their projects so that you don't have light escaping from the greenhouses. That will be a requirement here, just as it is with all the others. And if that's found to be a problem, that's, that is a violation of the ordinance, it's a violation of the permit. And so, you know, if that was continually happening without a way for them to, to resolve that, that would be subject to revocation of the permit.
Ryan?
The staff report reflects that power is provided by PG&E and solar, but it also talks about the use of generators. And I was just wondering if PG&E is available and solar is being used. Why is there a need for generator use? And, it doesn't make sense.
Generators will be used as a backup emergency power source, so there are limitations should they be used, but the way they will not be used as the primary source of power.
Yeah, to, to expand on that, you know, because that is a potentially a lot of cultivation area that's being, that would go there. They are proposing PG&E, but in the event that there's a power outage, that's, there's not enough solar that they can put on that site to power all of that. That's why you have a mixture of both solar and generators as backup.
Will the staff confer for a moment? I'd like to follow up a little on the, the water aspect because the fact that Matol is impaired, I think it's, it's been one of the watersheds where there's been a lot of consternation, a lot of rehab work done, a lot of concern over fisheries. And where did the fishing game and where did the water board come down on this project?
The, the Department of Fish and Game provided comments on the project that were included in Attachment Five, and by response to them, no further comments were received from the Department of Fish and Game. The applicant has an existing lake and stream bed alteration agreement with the Department of Fish and Game. The applicant is enrolled with the regional board for the cultivation at current time, which then it requires you to migrate to the state board policy and adhere to that. It's a conditional approval.
So as far as the, any additional impairment to the watershed over the Matol River, they had no, no concerns. They were, they were, an agreement that the three million gallon catchment tank, catchment pond would not be impacted?
The lake and stream bed alteration agreement issued by the Department of Fish and Game is for a pointed diversion and well that's used for domestic irrigation use currently. So the project is moving away from uses of those diversions that are currently permitted by the department.
Looking at some of the other projects that's come before us, it's kind of a, a number that kind of has stuck in my head has been eight to ten gallons of water per square foot. Does that, does that sound right? So if you have three hundred thousand twenty-eight square feet, and you're doing heavy mixed light, that three thousand gallons is going to make one rotation. And a mixed light can have up to four if they really got their stuff together. Now, maybe one or two of those may be in a wet period, but it would appear to me that three thousand gallons, if these numbers are correct, that I recall, looks to me like they would be short on water for, say, a second cycle during the forbearance period. Has, has staff done any, any assessment on, on that? Or could you correct me if my, if my math or my grade matter is wrong?
Thank you, Chairman Morris. I, I don't think that's wrong. You know, we do see, like I mentioned earlier, a wide range of water use from, from applicants. So one of the things that we do is we do rely on what their estimate is, and then as part of the approval of any project, we do require water metering. So there'd be a water metering, a meter that would have to be placed on the outfall to the pond to see how much water they're actually using. At every annual inspection, we go out to ensure that they're under, or at least not exceeding what they have told us they're going to use. So like, like I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we don't yet have is all of the detailed water information for each of those receiving potential relocation sites. Because right now, they haven't even identified all of the relocation sites that they would put on this property. So as each of those permits would come in, those would be analyzed. But, but again, that's not something that the, it is not part of the, the project to allow for stream diversions.
So if, if we approve this tonight, it's going to be, we're approving the SEQA document. And so that as these other RRRs become, as the timing of these other RRRs come on stream, what's your anticipation? Are we talking about one year, two year, five years down the road? How, what's your estimate on the complete build-out of this?
I think that would be more appropriate, a question for the applicant. You know, if I had to take a guess here, I would say probably about the three-year timeframe because they haven't yet identified all of the relocation that would happen. One thing I should, you know, if, if that is concern from the commission, I think it's totally appropriate to ask staff to bring this back with a revised SEQA document that would perhaps cover less cultivation area if there are, if you don't believe that those findings can be made.
Okay. Could the applicant come and answer the question about the, the water usage and, and the phasing in of, of the additional RRRs to come at, over what timeframe?
Well, considering that we're three years into this process now and we're just seeing you guys, I would imagine that this process is probably going to take a minimum of three years to be able to process all of the grading plans, restoration plans, replanting plans, do the biological studies at all of the Triple R sites, and then apply for the ZCC to be come to hearing in front of Mr. Ford, and then we would be approved at that point. I would like the commission to understand that this is a case-by-case approval process through Director Ford. So tonight you're approving a SEQA process and a current application, but any additional approvals would come from staff internally in the office. So by saying you approve the SEQA tonight doesn't say that we're going to move all nine Triple Rs over there. We still have a process to go through in order to do that. And for water use, I would say that, you know, not everything harvests at the same time. There's staggered harvests. At this site historically, they're running two runs. So if that makes it an issue, you know, puts a little bit of perspective into what they're doing, the weather conditions out in Honeydew during the wintertime are not ideal. We have tried to do weaker runs in the past with not a lot of success. Ends up costing more money than being lucrative or the manpower, and it just is kind of a headache. So again, this will be a staged-out process. Like I said before, the processing facility has been put in two stages because we're not going to just go up there and slep up ten thousand square feet two-story buildings without needing them. So this is a process that we're moving through. It will take time, and we're just asking the commission to take that into consideration.
So, well, before you leave, so during the forbearance period where this three thousand gallons would be your only water source, primary or only water source, you, yours, you're going to have two. have two runs, is that what you're saying?
Pretty much. That's historically what we've been doing on that location due to the weather. Also, I'd like to make a point about CDFW. When we initially did the LSA agreement with them, they approved us to cultivate up to two acres of cannabis using the well as long as we weren't using the water during the forbearance period. When I spoke to CDFW about this project and the fact that we weren't moving forward because we had to have a SEQA study done, they kind of looked at me like I was crazy because they said that this is an ideal location, probably hence why they're not here tonight. So, you know, I, I just, sorry, I kind of got off track on what I was saying, but...
Okay, well, we were talking about the 3,000 gallons and the 3 million gallons and the sufficiency of that.
Because we've been operating without this rain catchment pond for a couple of years now, we have a tremendous amount of tank storage there now. And that is what we've been using during the current forbearance periods to irrigate while we're in the forbearance period.
Is that tank storage going to be in addition to the 3 million gallons? Or will its tank storage disappear to put a greenhouse in its, in its physical place?
No, the tank storage is there. It's next to the road. It will stay there. That has, you can see it on the mapping. It has, there's no greenhouse delegation to that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners?
I would just like to kind of clarify one thing with the 3 million gallon pond. I agree with Cliff's comment about the water use. That, that is typically what we see. So I think, you know, this 3 million gallon pond should be sufficient for, you know, four to five acres. You know, one thing that I would say we are a little bit, have been caught in the middle is that, you know, as you can understand, it's, this is a phased process. And so I have a lot of other clients that have got in trouble for proposing too big of a pond that doesn't necessarily meet their current needs. And so we also did not want to, you know, propose something so big that if it doesn't get built out all the way, we have this mammoth pond that it doesn't have any use, that is, you know, occupying prime ag land. And so I think, I think the workaround here is that, you know, very close monitoring as it continues to be built out. I agree with Leslie's timeline of, you know, three to five years probably for full build-out and that you, you know, flow metering every year, very tight. And, you know, use, if you're getting close to your total use, you know, you supplement with water tanks. You know, the 5,000 gallon poly tanks are coming down in cost and, you know, our, there's plenty of additional flat space within the development footprint here for a lot of storage in 5,000 gallon poly tanks as needed as, as this gets, if this gets close to full build-out. So...
Thank you. Comment for the director. We're approving the SEQA document site of this tonight, and then the additional decisions would be yours under a zoning administrator responsibility. If we approve this with 3,000, 3 million gallon pond and at this point in time somewhat minimal hard tank, hard storage, two years in the process, they're phased into it, and all of a sudden the 3 million gallon isn't enough, they need 5 million gallons, do we, is that, we open up the SEQA and they're back before us? Or is that something that, that the language of the SEQA document is sufficient to handle?
That's a really good question. And the answer lies in the fact that if you certify the SEQA document tonight based upon the project description, you're finding basically that the eight acres of cultivation is adequately analyzed in the SEQA document. And so that would allow up to eight acres. If in fact they were to find that they needed to use more water than that, then there would be a problem with SEQA. It's a little bit of a dilemma because the ZCCs are ministerial actions, they're not discretionary actions. And so it would be far better if the commission's concerned at this point about the amount of water use to scale back the project so that the ministerial actions that are approved in the future are done up to a limited point. You've heard tonight a couple of different comments about four to five or six acres. And so it really is important for the planning commission to consider the degree of the impact and what has been disclosed and what has been mitigated for in terms of the environmental effect of using a certain amount of water.
And then you, as a zoning administrator, let's say, let's say this doesn't get approved and it comes in phases, two or three years down, down the road, they've done the metering and the numbers show that the 3 million gallons isn't going to cover eight acres. So, and they come before the zoning administrator with a request to put additional cultivation in. At that point in time, then your decision would be that, no, there's not sufficient water without some type of amendment to either the permit or some type of amendment to the SEQA document?
So part of the struggle there is going to be that there's got to be ongoing monitoring of, of the ZCCs, which we do on an annual basis. Particularly, we, when there's concerns about water, we require that there, there be monitoring. And that could be a mitigation measure in the initial study mitigated negative declaration. And if that's the case, then we would have, say, three or four years down the road, we would have that monitoring data to know how much water is being utilized and whether there is sufficient capacity remaining there in order to grant additional zoning clearance certificates. That is something that can be worked into the, the initial study, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
So I had a question regarding the RRRs. How many, there's three or four already going to this site and there's how many, how many acres is that? And then how much is left then?
Two have been, two have been approved in 2018 for a total of 40,000 acres that...
Square foot.
Sorry. Forty thousand square feet.
I was going to say forty thousand acres.
That's a lot, right. Forty thousand square feet. That's both, 20,000 square feet were allowed to relocate for both of the approved. So that's, and then there'd be seven left that is what is known now. The additional on the map on the screen, up in the upper left-hand corner, you can see where there's no greenhouses and they're proposing that would be the development area for the future RRRs that may be identified.
I'm looking at the map that shows areas, let's see, areas one through 12. It was on the page just before this in the main report. And it's also on another addendum here.
Well, in the northwest area, there are no greenhouses shown there. That is the space that they would have available for additional greenhouses. Based on the acreage there, full build-out to the eight acres may not be possible because of the site constraints with the setbacks with the wetlands.
So how many acres are already spoken for and how many are left?
Right now, there is about an acre and a quarter, 56,000 square feet are there. So the remainder of the, under seven acres then, total as far as what's developed currently. The, just a minute so I can figure out the math. The, you know, 180,000 square feet is essentially the total square footage associated with the nine RRRs that have been developed or are that, they're proposing to bring to the site. So 40,000 is there now, 140,000 square feet is what will be brought there in the three to five years.
Because we're talking acres and, and water and that sort of thing, so I want to compare.
Just make a few clarifications here, I think...
All right. And what we'll do is, is, you know, you can respond if I, if I give you permission to approach it. And when I do, what I would like to have you do is to make it succinct because we don't have the time to get into a large back and forth here. We have quite a bit of other stuff to do. So if, if there's a confusion that you need, that you'd like to clear up, if you could do that short and succinct, I'd appreciate that. Go ahead.
Thank you. So there's, Megan was saying about 180,000 square feet, which is approximately four acres is what is proposed to be moved there with the nine RRRs plus the pre-existing. This diagram right here, you can see there's a, they're, out of the greenhouses that are shown on this diagram, there are some that do not yet have an RRR assigned to it. So this, what's shown on this diagram is actually bigger than four acres. And then that area in the upper left is actually, is kind of the, the future build-out. That's, you know, maybe the up to eight acres. So that's, there's four acres that's, of RRRs that are proposed to be moved here right now.
Thank you, Speaker. Commissioners? Brian?
Some of the public comments that we've received in writing related to the existing operation and related to impacts that the neighbors were experiencing from noise and traffic. And I was just wondering to what extent the existing noise is being mitigated in addition to mitigating the additional impacts from the, from the additional activities that'll be occurring?
Currently, the, the applicant will, the applicant will need to abide by the noise standards. There are other operations in the area that contribute to the noise that have gone through the system at the zoning administrator. Additional conditions of approval have been applied to the project, both for the neighbors and for this project regarding the, the maximum level of noise that's going to be allowed and the road improvements, and that'll be necessary in an attempt to address the concerns of the neighbors.
Go ahead, Alan.
So, being in the development business, I'm going to ask a question. I, I'm pretty certain I know the answer, but I'm going to ask. So if this was a subdivision and you were doing a development and you decided you were going to do it in, let's say, three phases, kind of like this, we're going to start out with this and we're going to, each time you, you decided, well, we're getting close to done with phase one, we want to start phase two, we'd have to come back before the planning commission to get phase two, correct? It may be a master plan that it's, it's there, but you would still have to come back before the planning commission before you would get, it wouldn't come to you as a, for a zoning administrator certification. It would come back either to us or to the supervisors.
Well, for a phase tentative map, you're saying?
Yeah.
No, a phase tentative map, once a phase tentative map is, is approved, it can be built out without coming back to the planning commission. The thing that you typically see with phase tentative maps is the map needs to be extended because the phases aren't being built out quite as fast.
I understand that, but wouldn't it have to come back and get approval? Especially if you didn't know what exactly was going to go there. I mean, if you had it all planned out, you know, that might be one thing, but we don't even know what exactly may go there in the future.
Well, no, we know what's going to go there. There's going to be, what they're trying to do is, is plan this to be a receiving site for RRRs. So basically, we're talking about eight acres of cultivation. That, that's clear.
Okay.
I, I think the thing that you were struggling with earlier, that the commission was struggling with, is, is one, noise impacts, which I think Ms. Ryan addressed, and then the water usage and, and how to be assured that the amount of water that's being provided is sufficient to accommodate that eight acres of cultivation. The initial study did not identify there would be a significant adverse impact associated with water use because of the rainwater catchment. As long as all the water is coming out of that 3 million gallon pond, there is no significant environmental effect. There's no impact on the Mattool River, there's no impact on groundwater resources, there's, there's no impact. The question that I think you raised was what happens if they run out of that 3 million gallons? Are they going to start pumping water from another source? And the reality is, is the way these permits are being structured, the way it's being intended for them to be structured, is that that 3 million gallons is the source of water and that's it.
Brian?
Well, I guess what, the incongruity to me is that when we asked about the water, what I heard from staff is that we couldn't accurately estimate how much would be needed because we didn't know exactly which projects were going to be slotted into those RRR spaces. And so typically with phased SEQA documents, you analyze each phase and how much mitigation is needed for each phase. And in this case, it doesn't appear to me that the 3 million gallons is sufficient for full build-out. So either we, in my opinion, we need to scale back the amount that we're approving, or we need to add additional requirements for further phases if they get to that point.
Melanie?
Yeah, it's my understanding that this is all being analyzed in terms of the max build-out. And the 3 million gallons, although it does seem to be in the low end, is not something that's infeasible given some of the other smaller projects, not that you can necessarily translate. So my concern is more in regards to monitoring. So if it looked impossible, then, I mean, that is one thing. But if it looks at all feasible, I would just like to know what the monitoring schedule is because we need to ensure that what we're approving is actually being followed, whether we believe that they can pull it off or not. And so I, I know that staff did mention that there would be a yearly check-in, and I'm wondering if we can ask to have a bit more maybe in terms of this project and in terms of the water monitoring? And I also have a, a second question that's just for staff, generally not in relation to this project, but have we looked into at all remote monitoring tools?
No, we have not at this time.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the monitoring schedule, I'd just like a little bit more detail.
Sure, thank you, Chairman Morris. So our typical process is that every year we do go out and do an inspection. And as part of that inspection, we will look at the, the monitoring information that are required to provide the well, well, in this case, the outfall logs, that monitoring data. And so that's the way that this, this conditional use permit that's in front of you is actually conditioned. But we could amend that condition to require that they provide monitoring data on a more frequent basis. You know, it could be biannually or perhaps even quarterly if that's something that the commission felt was necessary.
Thank you. And, and does anyone actually go out or is that just strictly just being sent in?
As most projects are right now, we actually go out to the site and that's when we're looking at that data. But we could amend the condition to require that they send some of that in on a more frequent basis. Or we could amend the, make a condition that we go out and actually monitor, you know, onsite more frequently. That's certainly something that we could accomplish.
I think it might be good practice just generally for very large farms, you know, any type of farm that uses that much water to have at least a... to have at least a, you know, twice a year monitoring for water usage.
I know in a lot of, a lot of different monitoring situations, and let's take a land trust, for example. When something goes into a land trust, the trustee is quite often paid for, paid on a yearly basis to go out and monitor to make sure that the contract terms are being adhered to. And under your current enforcement or your current monitoring deal, is that a cost 100% borne by the county? Or is that something that is some kind of a reimbursement by the applicant?
That cost is 100% borne by the applicant. So every year, we do require that they provide a compliance fee to allow for us to go out and do that inspection. And then we do actually track the time that's spent and would send them a bill if that fee doesn't cover the amount of time that we've spent ensuring that they're in compliance.
And is there anything prohibiting that from, say, us conditioning this based on, say, two or even three times during the forbearance period of having some kind of a monitoring? Is that something that is doable and is the staff available for that?
It is a loaded question. It is doable. It does require allocation of staff resources. We are allocating staff right now to do nothing but condition compliance following up on permits. So it's something that we can certainly work into our schedule.
Would that be something that, that regular planning staff would do? Or would that be enforcement or who would do the?
It is, they are planners that are doing that.
Okay. Well, it looks to me like, I'll kind of summarize what I've heard here from the public and heard from staff, and this is kind of a tough one because the RRR was an integral part of the ordinance. And it was set in there so that environmental damage or activities in other areas could be remediated and future environmental damages stopped. And that's what we have here, is that RRR working. I think from what I've heard here is that the magnitude of this is where the concern is, is the size of it. However, you know, the ordinance language is, you know, is there. And so what I am dealing with is that, you know, I don't think we have the ability to override the ordinance language, but we do have the ability to condition this based on any demonstrated or potential public safety, health, or nuisance. And so from what I'm hearing or, and what I see here, the, you know, there's a question in my mind whether or not this full build-out could be done with 3 million gallons of water during the forbearance period. And so I'm wondering whether there is a way where we can condition final build-out based on having a history, a track history of successfully monitoring the water for more than once a year to make sure that the estimates that the applicant has put forth are really viable. And I'll just make an example of kind of where I'm thinking is, you know, if we say that after three years or after they've hit, say, five acres, any additional zoning administrator approvals need to be justified with some history and some monitoring data. Is that something that is doable in your mind, Director?
We have a struggle here. And the struggle is, is that we did not identify water use as a significant adverse impact. So in order to put in a mitigation measure within the initial study, we would need to identify that as a potential impact, which is a new impact that hasn't been evaluated. So the best way to do this is to ask the applicant if they would be willing to phase this project to track water usage during the implementation of the first phase and then come back with a report to the commission, condition it, not through the, or the... There is no good way to get there.
Okay, because of the SEQA document?
Correct.
Melanie?
I believe you can add monitoring requirements.
We have no impact. So we have no mitigation on the SEQA document, which means we can't add a mitigation measure to a factor that's not a significant adverse impact. There's no impact. So basically, what the commission would need to do is identify that there's a potentially significant impact. And then that would mean that we would need to recirculate the document and impose a new mitigation measure to address the water use.
Right, thank you. I meant internally, there must be a way to just add the monitoring.
We can, we can do all kinds of monitoring, that's not the issue. It's how to impose the framework that I believe Commissioner Morris was trying to get to, which is to create a scenario whereby we approve, or the commission would approve the project in a phased manner. We would monitor the first phase, demonstrate that the water usage is in line with the amount of water storage. And then we could subsequently approve the subsequent phase when it's demonstrated that there's enough water there. And the problem is, is that the ZCCs aren't part of the action here. I think the thing that the commission needs to do is to modify the project description and to reduce it to a level where you would feel comfortable in terms of that number of acres and then certify the document based upon that modified project description, that anything over that you find, you would find would be a significant adverse impact.
Thank you. Melanie?
Well, where I was going with it was I was hoping that we could have a policy where if we have a usage over a certain number of gallons, then we would just have at least two visits. Because you were saying you would have one anyway. And so I don't really see why we can't pursue a policy where if we have over a certain number of gallons, we have two visits.
So there's a fine line here between identifying what we can legally do and defend and doing something that sounds good, makes sense, everybody agrees that would be an appropriate action. But there's nothing to attach that policy to. And so this is an action that when we carry this forward, we're going to have to enforce somehow.
Thank you. I realize for tonight it doesn't help, but it's something I would like to see pursued for the future.
Okay. Anyone?
So I'm just throwing thoughts out there. So if that's the case, then, from Director Ford about the amount, because that was getting at what my questions were about the acres and use and what we have projected right now and what's going there. If we could, is there six acres or what would be for that?
Well, I...
The commission here with the 3,000 acre or the gallon?
So normally, a conservative rule of thumb, and it's been stated here between eight and 10, and that's for a single run. So if you've got 3 million gallons of water, that's about, what, 300,000 square feet, 150,000 square feet, so somewhere between four and five acres, assuming mixed light, assuming two turns a year. So probably five acres.
Well, certainly, in my mind, you know, I think someone made the comment, I think, I believe it was staff, that on the average, it was 500,000 per acre. So I'm kind of like Commissioner Newman, is that, you know, we might want to put a cap on this, approve it with a cap of six acres. We have testimony, we have some, not only from here, but from some other projects where that number seems to tie in, is that correct?
Correct. We have definitely seen those numbers on other projects.
And just one other thing, I'd like to make sure that conditions 25 and 26 about the roads and all users and road maintenance agreement association is really stringently worked towards with those two requirements on this approval.
There's a lot of discussion about water and I think water is of utmost importance, but also the human impacts. We've had testimony from the neighbors and there's written testimony that this is a major impact to their lives. And that kind of concerns me as a landowner and homeowner in the county that you live someplace peacefully and all of a sudden it's completely changed. And I, I don't agree with this type of development on the river. I think it's too extreme and I think it's an extreme impact on the neighborhood. And the neighbors have already voiced that, they voiced that about, I don't know, there was one of them, they talk about crime and some of the connections to the owners. I don't know if that's true or not. But I think that in addition to the fact that it's on a river, it's, you know, which did in the history talk about having agriculture there, but not greenhouses and that many people coming to the site to work. So I think we need to think about that. I think if you thought about yourself and if all of a sudden you've been living someplace, you know, that you enjoyed living for 15 years plus and your whole world gets turned upside down, that that should have some consideration given.
Any other comments, commissioners? I think we've kind of exhausted this. So if someone would like to make a stab at resolving what we have here. I'm somewhat amenable to Mr. Newman's suggestion.
Chair Morris, if I could offer, if it would be the inclination of somebody to make a motion, you could use the motion that's in the executive summary, which says, "Adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Honeydew Ranch LLC, subject to modifying the project description to establish a maximum of six acres of cultivation." And then everything else would remain the same.
That was kind of my thought, was with a cap on it. Something that falls in line with some of the testimony that we've heard here tonight. And also, you know, if there are neighbor concerns, I mean, we're, at this point in time, we'd be talking about a 25% reduction in the size of the project, but should we somewhat do reduce the road noise, road use, any other nuisance concerns that the neighbors may have? And so I think it would be totally appropriate to do that.
I'll take a stab.
Take a stab.
Take a stab. So I move we adopt the mitigated negative declaration prepared for the Honeydew Ranch LLC project, subject to modifying the total acreage to six acres. Section 15074 of the state SEQA guidelines, make all the required findings for the approval of the conditional use permit and special permit based on the evidence in the staff report and adopt the resolution approving the proposed Honeydew Ranch LLC project subject to the recommended conditions.
We have a motion, we have a second. Chairman will second it for discussion purposes. Does everyone understand the motion? Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? Are we ready for the question? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No. Opposed?
And at 4-2, the action is approved with a reduction acreage from eight to six. And with that, we're going to take a 10-minute recess and then we will be back. And the next item, so that staff can be getting prepared, the next item on the agenda is the Full Moon Farms Conditional, oops, excuse me, excuse me, the HUMFDC investment conditional use permit in the Miranda area. That will be next, so staff can get prepared to that and we'll be back in 10 minutes. In session here, and again, the HUMFDC conditional use permit in Miranda will be the first one on the topic here tonight. You ready?
I'm ready, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So Cliff Johnson with the Humble County Planning Department. I do have to apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. We were actually asking for a...
Let's keep your comments down, we're in session now. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. We were asking for a continuance of this project because we did receive some last-minute information that we were seeking to address. But I'm going to give a brief overview of the project and then talk a little bit about those concerns. So this application is a conditional use permit for the continued operation of 21,000 square feet of existing mixed light cultivation and a 4,200 square foot pertinent nursery. The mixed light is actually going to be a combination of actual mixed light and light deprivation techniques. One of the, they are proposing to do processing on-site. The operations plan mentions processing in an existing building. We have recommended a condition of approval that no processing is allowed on-site until that building is either relocated or they obtain a lotline adjustment with a neighbor. That existing building is actually located on the property line. So that's the reason for that condition to limit processing to off-site until they're able to get something that can actually be permitted on the property. The access to the property is provided by Felt Road, which comes off of School Road, which is the public road. They've provided a road evaluation report, which demonstrates that that road has the functional capacity to serve the project. We did receive a comment from an adjacent property owner, I believe, today, which was the reason for the request for continuance, who mentioned that they actually typically use Barnham Road off of School Road and that the applicant has not been using Felt Road. So that's, that was the reason for us to ask for a continuance, to try to address that with the applicant. The applicant is actually, I believe, not here today because they did, they were expecting that this was going to be continued. So with that, I'd go ahead and conclude my presentation and try to answer any questions, yeah?
Okay. And with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this project, please approach the podium at this time.
Good evening, my name is Dean Howlett, I'm resident of Eureka. I'm here with my brother Brent Howlett, who's also a Eureka resident. We jointly own assessors parcel number 211-376-019, which is adjacent to the project. The first thing I'd like to address is that in the staff report, our parcel is misdesignated as 029, is on page 13 of the staff report number four. So we would request that staff report be amended to have the correct parcel number. Like to briefly describe our property, which is 10 acres of undeveloped timberland. Our father logged it 45 years ago. It the logging was done under a timber harvest plan filed with California Division of Forestry. The trees that are now growing on our property are ones that we planted in compliance with that timber harvest plan. Reason we're objecting to the conditional use permit is a metal building with concrete foundation encroaches on our property by about five feet. We, we verified this encroachment with a land survey by Dylan Kohlstad, who's a California licensed land survey. That survey is dated in June of 2017. We provided copies of that to the planning department to, in a meeting with Rodney Andel in September of 2018. That survey should be in the material with this project. Although it was attached to a previous parcel number, the, the HUMFDC parcel number has changed through a lot line adjustment since that time. We have been unsuccessfully attempting to resolve this matter for two years. We've expended considerable time and energy as well as expense for the survey and legal advice. For us, the simplest solution would be for HUMFDC to remove their illegally constructed and unpermitted building from our land. We've, and return the land to its previous condition. We ask that the commission deny this permit until this matter is resolved.
Thank you, Speaker.
It's distressing that this is one example of what may be going on there on an ongoing basis when you have people who are not qualified to draw plot plans with setbacks and our surveys are not required to know that even the, the improvements are on the parcel as designated, and I hope staff will verify in the future, maybe that the site's correct and maybe require some surveys and things in the future. So if this is happening, I'm not making a determination or anything of recommendation, but it distresses me to see this kind of incompetence on these submittals on these permits.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Yeah, I'm Don Felt. I own the property next door to that. And they are not good neighbors, they are not using Felt Road because they would not take any care, anything of it. They had no right of way through it. So they tried to, tried to say they're using it, but they're not. And they do absolutely no maintenance, they promised, but they didn't. I was going to possibly give them a right of way through there to do it, but they just tore my road up. It's a private road. And I feel where you guys are giving them the right to use private roads through people's property by giving these permits to them, they should have to do the maintenance on them. And I've done the maintenance on the road for probably 50 years myself. My dad did it before then. Hence it's Felt Road. And they're also using Barnum Road, which the bottom part of it goes through town. And they have Bob Harris down at the bottom of the hill, he, we put up two speed bumps down there to slow them down because they just barrel through there. And that's what they were doing on my road, was just tearing it up. No maintenance, promises, promises, but nothing. Now, until you guys, I noticed the last one too, you very well stepped over most of that. These people, you've got a house here. You've lived there all your life, no traffic going by it. And all of a sudden you bring 30 workers in to work and you're just tearing up the road, going by it, you know? That, that's a big thing that should be considered in things. It's what they're doing to these roads and what they're doing to the surrounding people. And big guys, figures walk over us. They're walking over everybody. Not just, not just this grow. I just listened to the last one. So I know it's, it's happening everywhere and it's going to happen until somebody puts a stop to it. I was lucky enough to be able to put a stop to them using my road. But I'm also, I've got a lot less water on my place now because they had a well up there that was pumping more water than anybody was using up there before. And they, they ran it dry, they drilled another well. And now we're, we're sitting there, our water is dropping all the time, the more they use, the less I have. So you guys seem, don't seem to think that water has anything to do with anything. The cumulative effect of what's going on is going to dry the U River up. The mouth is being taken out. That whole Fish Creek Canyon there where they drain into, they have, there's other grow, a lot of other grows up there, legal and illegal. And at the mouth of Fish Creek this summer, there was no water coming out there. I've lived there for 60 years, over 60 years. And it's never been dry before, now it's dry. So one of these days, you guys are going to all say, oh, we should have thought of that. But you're not. You know? So, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker?
I don't know that I need it, but can I be granted an extra minute? We went a minute past about on the last comment. I'm here, I know one of the legal owners of the company. They be, I'm waiting for a text message to come back from them when they actually took over a portion of the legal ownership. They got involved in the project, this place I knew as a child, it was a beautiful place. Some people went in there, it was thrashed, it was really, really abused. This person got involved in the project and has spent tons and tons of time cleaning up the project. I think it's unfair that the planner isn't here to show the actual true presentation and really point in on all the environmental things that since the other project owner has gotten involved, that they've cleaned up, they've hauled off. I believe, I talked to him on the phone a couple nights ago, it was like 80 yards of contaminated soil from a previous landowner spilling soil, or not soil, diesel, sorry. They've really, really done their best since they've been involved in this project to clean it up and make it something worthwhile and a good project. I do know that they are accessing through Barnum Road, he told me himself. They have access because they have a, they are granted access by the adjoining partial off of Barnum. I know the applicant has spent in the neighborhood of $75,000 to $100,000 in road improvements, all nice bare butte rock up Barnum Road. Because the access, yes, there is a disgruntlement between neighbors, I don't know that. I know the previous speaker, Don, since I was a wee lad, he knew my grandfather. So, I mean, whatever was going on there, what the, what this applicant did is found another way to get to the project without upsetting neighbors and took care of the road. And really, really tried their best to clean up the property that was not well taken care of. It was, it was a horse ranch back when I was a kid and then it was thrashed, it was in the paper, you know, it was a busted piece of property. And then, you know, if, if the goal of legalization, if you find a landowner that's going to come into a project and bring it into environmental compliance, I think the commission needs to honor that and they need to say, hey, we have a good actor that's going to take over this project and mitigate all the environmental things. Yes, there's a building issue, I don't know if the person involved now, I don't know if the person involved now actually built that building and it in a bad spot, I can't answer to that. I do know previous operators of the project had open exposed lighting. I know that the applicant now, they don't allow for any of that kind of stuff. He is the type of guy, if he says he's going to do something, he's going to do it. Every experience I've had with the person, I'm actually here to talk about hemp. And now I'm here at the second time at the podium for something I didn't plan on. But please do think about that, that the planner didn't get to show the environmental things that have been fixed. And the applicant, he has surgery in San Francisco tomorrow morning. Because he got a phone call from Rodney that the project was going to be extended, he decided to drive down to San Francisco tonight instead of 4:00 AM tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to comment? Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing no one, we'll close this section of public comment and we'll bring it back to the commission, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wondered why if staff had originally requested a continuance and we told the applicant we were going to continue it, why we're trying to push forward with having a hearing without the benefit of having a full staff report and the ability to ask questions of the applicant. I would be much more comfortable continuing this and having a full, you know, hearing as normal.
Melanie?
I agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this item to a date uncertain.
Well, maybe.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. I'd like to get a little bit more information from staff so that if, if the continuance is our action, I think myself, I'd like to have some time to think about or raise some questions so that if we get back here at a different date, some of the questions that I have, staff will be prepared to give us that information. And then, so what I'd like to, to to know is my understanding that there are two roads to the project. One of those roads had a road survey done. One did not have a road survey done, is that correctly?
That is correct.
So the road that had the survey on, do we know whether the applicant has a legal right to use that road or not?
The applicant has, in, when they filed the application, they are asserting that they have the legal right to use that road. An examination of the deed indicates that there is an easement that they have over the southern property for Felt Road.
So. So you have reviewed the deed and you're saying that their deed language gives them a legal right to use Felt Road, is that correct?
It appears that way, yes.
Okay. And then the other items that, that there are questions that came up in the, in the testimony here, I think we, it comes up very, very frequently. And I, I think that, you know, it's kind of been the recommendation of council over the years that I've been here, that when you get to easements and you, and you get to encroachments, those are private matters. And I don't believe we have ever conditioned a denial of a permit based on an easement or an encroachment dispute between neighbors. We've always taken the position and, and based on council's advice, that that's basically what attorneys are for. It's not the position of the county to get into a permit conditioned upon the county getting involved in a private legal dispute. And so I think if it comes back before us, then we'll vote on the motion here shortly. I think, you know, I would like to have, you know, those questions discussed next time. And with that, any other question on the motion? Seeing then, we'll call for the question for a vote on a continues to a date uncertain, is that correct, Director?
That's what the motion was. If we could rephrase that, I think it, date uncertain is fine.
Then, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The project is continued to a date uncertain. And with that, the next item is the Gandry LLC conditional use permit in the McKinleyville area. And so if we could get a staff report on that, I'd appreciate that.
Good evening, Commissioners, I am Portia Sausedo, the assigned planner for this project. This is an application for a conditional use permit for the Gandry LLC. It was received after the adoption of the commercial cannabis land use ordinance or ordinance 2.0. The proposed microbusiness is located at 1580 Nursery Way in units, both units B and C and PQ in McKinleyville, within an existing structure. This is the street view, looking both east and west for both of the entrances, demarcated by stars. The proposed microbusiness activities include manufacturing in Suite BC and distribution in Suite PQ. The applicant was previously approved to operate adult use cannabis retail sales and medical cannabis, and a medical cannabis dispensary within Suite BC. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And there would be three full-time employees proposed. The power is provided by PG&E, while the water and sewer are provided by the McKinleyville Community Service District. The project site is within a developed commercial shopping center with paved parking lot that includes 160 spaces. The manufacturing and distribution facilities of the microbusiness utilizes four suites and requires four parking spaces, in addition to the 13 spaces required for the already approved retail dispensary facility. Suite BC, the proposed manufacturing area would consist of an infusion activities and a restricted access portion of the suite. The manufactured cannabis products sourced from other licensed manufacturers will be utilized to make infusions, including but not limited to edibles, tinctures and topical ointments. The retail area you can see here is in green, that's already been approved. The pink is the manufacturing area that's proposed. Suite PQ is where the distribution activities are proposed, which has existing features to facilitate distribution activities, including an overhead door and a port in which vehicles may enter and exit. The distribution activities are proposed to include detailed inventory, tracking, quality control and storage of cannabis products in accordance with state and local regulations. control, and storage of cannabis products in accordance with state and local regulations. The county did receive two public comments on this project. One was from a citizen that witnessed suspicious activity, um, in the neighboring Central Avenue parking or properties, uh, 1581 through 1585. And, um, a security plan was requested prior to this project approval. A copy of the operations plan was provided in response and no further comment was received. And, um, a letter in opposition was received August 23rd from, um, Mickey's Quality Cars. And this was part of the early notification for the thousand feet, um, because of the community planning area. And they were opposed to the project and in response, yeah, were sent out the early notification and, but on September 6th, we also received a letter in support, um, from the Humboldt Green LLC and One Degree Consulting. And it is the staff recommendation that the planning commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15301 of existing facilities and SEQA guidelines. Make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit. Adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit subject to conditions of approval. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Do you, any of the Commissioners have any questions for our staff on our report? Mike?
I just have one. I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. Pretty much that whole building that's in the L shape is all of the same, um, cannabis usage, marijuana, and everything else? Is there something in between there?
There's, there's a many different businesses, I think, within, there would be two, uh, the PQ and the BC suites that would be specifically for cannabis.
And we haven't gotten anything from them?
Nope. There is no comment from any of the homeowners or the other businesses in opposition.
All right. Thank you.
And-
Brian?
Are there any specific requirements or prohibitions on signage, uh, with regards to what's already been approved or what's proposed for this modification?
There were no proposed signage, uh, plans submitted.
So just to clarify, if there's no proposed signage plan, then there cannot be signs? Is that what you're saying?
There is a condition that would require, I'd have to open the staff report to read it to see which number it is.
The, the signage of this operation would be required to comply with the Humboldt County sign ordinance. And because this is located in a, um, essentially a, a commercial center, you know, it's one shopping center, um, that would have to actually comply with the, they would have to submit a, a sign plan that shows how it's consistent with the sign requirements for the entirety of that development. So there'd be basically a master sign plan that we would have to review it against.
And that goes to the, to the director for approval or to the staff or who approves that?
That would go to staff. That is correct. So as part of, um, essentially any sign that they would put up there would most likely require a building permit. So we would review that as basically zoning clearance, uh, if they were to propose a sign.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, um, number seven, an attachment one.
I have a question on manufacturing. Is there a restriction on the hours that you can manufacture or is it 24/7? You, you talked about the retail hours but not manufacturing.
Um, the retail portion of this project is already approved. I was talking about the manufacturing.
So the manufacturing's allowed from 10 to 7?
Um, that's the proposed hours of operation.
So, so yes, that would be a requirement that they limit their manufacturing to those hours.
And then they also talk in the plan about having onsite security. Is that 24/7? They were talking about having a security guard?
They actually don't mention if they're going to have somebody there 24/7 and that's not a requirement of the ordinance. So that might be a question for the applicant.
Any other questions on staff report? Seeing none, we'll open the public comment, uh, section. Anyone wishing to publicly comment on this project, please approach the podium at this time. And for the lateness of the night, uh, I'm going to have to be a little bit more strict, I think, on the, on the three minutes. We still have several, uh, agenda items to go through here. So, anyway, anyone wishing to speak on this, please approach the podium.
My name's Steve Geeter. I'm the applicant on this application. And I just wanted to, um, address a couple of the questions that had come up. One, uh, had to do with a letter that was, uh, sent to us, sent to you all that had something to do, that mentioned, um, suspicious activity on the parcel. And, um, I contacted the owner of that property, which is Lube Zone and another, and another, um, property that's, that doesn't actually have any visibility into our parking lot at all. What the letter was actually saying was that they believe there's a lot of suspicious activity in that part of town. And they were just making sure we had, um, adequate security measures. I called the, Linda, I believe her name was, earlier today just to ask her if there was anything I could do to help, uh, help her understand what we were doing there. So that was just, uh, the one piece. Um, for our manufacturing and distribution, realistically, I don't foresee us wanting to put up signage, um, and probably just use our address, um, for people to find where we are since we're not, um, advertising to public or trying to, uh, draw any attention from the public in any way. And then as far as security goes, um, we're required to have, um, certain security measures and we've, we've more than fulfilled all those obligations, um, which is having someone onsite, um, when, open hours, that's, um, trained in the security measures as well as all the different monitoring that has to be there 24/7 and recorded and kept. But there will not be, it's not proposed to have an actual security guard on the premises after business hours.
Any other questions for applicant? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this, please approach the podium. Anyone? Seeing no one, I'll close this section of public comment. We'll bring it back to Commissioners for the discussion.
I don't have, um, any issue with this project and so I was wondering if maybe we wanted to make a motion.
Any other comments based on what we've, what we've heard here tonight? If not, and a motion probably in order, if someone wants to take a stab at it?
I'll take a stab at it. I'll find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15301 of state SEQA guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit based on the evidence in the staff report and adopt the resolution approving the proposed, the Gantry LLC Conditional Use Permit subject to the recommended conditions.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Does everyone understand the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Not? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The project is approved. And with that, we will move along to continued public hearing on the amendment to Humboldt County zoning maps to make them consistent with the 2017 Humboldt County general plan. And this is a continued item, uh, to give the public additional time to, uh, comment on it. Uh, and so what I'm going to ask is there anyone here tonight that will not be able to make it back, uh, on the, uh, October 17th meeting, which is two weeks down the road? And we'll, uh, we will have a, uh, more of a, uh, public comment on that. And anyone who cannot make it, uh, will take time and they can come to the podium tonight and make their comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on this tonight? Seeing no one, then, um, we'll close that public comment section and, um, I guess we'll take a, uh, motion on a continuance.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to continue this item to October 17th.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The, uh, project is, uh, continued until the 17th. And now we are on the last item of the agenda, but I don't think it is a small item. It is the industrial hemp ordinance workshop. And, um, this is a workshop, so, uh, no action will be taken tonight, but we are here to hear, to seek public input on the hemp ordinance. And so I will ask staff to, uh, give us a, uh, report on the industrial hemp ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Alana Adler and I'm the assigned planner, um, working on the industrial hemp ordinance along with Michael Richardson, a supervising planner. And we're also working with Jeff Dolph, um, the agricultural commissioner on this project. Um, as a little bit of history, um, whoops. A little bit of history, um, the passage of the 2018 Farm Bill created a legal pathway for the industrial, for industrial hemp to be cultivated on a commercial production scale. Um, the, in, in June of this year, the Board of Supervisors approved a six-month moratorium on cultivation of industrial hemp in Humboldt County. The reason, the reason, um, they, uh, wanted to impose the moratorium was to provide, um, some time to, uh, to develop rules and guidelines addressing the expressed concerns to the local cannabis industry and other, and address other impacts, um, with industrial hemp cultivation. Um, with the deadline approaching, um, we have been working on developing this industrial hemp ordinance, um, for your consideration and recommendations. So with that, um, we'll get into overview of the draft ordinance, summarize our public outreach efforts, um, up to this point, allow some time for public comment and to receive some recommendations from the Commissioners. In June, we held three, um, public workshops. We held two in Redway and one in Eureka. Um, we heard resounding support, um, to craft the regulations to address medicinal hemp. Um, there's a long local legacy in Humboldt County with the development of CBD medicinal, um, cannabis strains that date back from the 1980s. Um, so we really heard a lot of support to focus our regulations on allowing easy, an ease of entry for hemp cultivation, um, and allow for smaller growers to be able to cultivate hemp, um, ensure that cannabis permit holders have the ability to also, um, have options under the industrial hemp ordinance, to, um, exempt hemp from the Measure S tax, and to ensure testing standards are in place, um, for safe medicinal users since we are talking about a medicinal, um, product. What we did hear as well is, um, based on the concerns of pollen and, um, from industrial hemp, um, to not impact the existing, um, commercial cannabis industry, to prohibit seed and fiber, um, hemp cultivation at this time. Maybe we can, and they, you know, conceded, maybe we at some point can address that once we, um, really work on the regulations for the, the medicinal hemp regulations. So we went back and started drafting our, um, ordinance, um, and allowed for the cannabinoid hemp cultivation. So that opens it up beyond just a CBD kind of marketplace. It just has to be, industrial hemp just requires that it's less than 0.7% THC. Um, we have developed some provisions for registration and application process, um, identified some areas that, um, appear to be good industrial hemp management zone areas. Turned, deemed that term industrial hemp management zone. Um, and worked to interface with commercial cannabis. And we have some alternatives that we've, um, come up with to share, um, to help with the recommendation process. So within the industrial hemp management zone, this kind of is a response to the, um, request to ease regulations into the industrial hemp, um, cultivation process. So registration would allow, um, a cultivator to go to the ag commissioner's office, register as a hemp breeder or a hemp breeder or as a hemp cultivator, um, using, uh, full sun outdoor cultivation with, or within existing greenhouses. Um, and the industrial hemp cultivation zone, I might mention, is been identified where there is, um, existing agricultural use as the primary use on the property. These properties are all Zone AE, Ag Exclusive, and, um, are outside community plan areas. So I'm just going to run through our industrial hemp, um, management zone areas from the north, um, southward. Um, we've identified an area in Oric, um, and an area in Blue Lake, um, an area in Arcata, um, South Eureka, Ferndale, and, um, lastly, Rio Del. So to give a sense, one of the comments we, um, received was what's the breakdown of the acreage in these different, um, zones? So we've provided a breakdown here to kind of give a sense. Those maps, you know, they're Google Earth, so it's a little bit hard to tell what the acreage is. So we've broken these, um, down a little more precisely, um, in response to that, that question. So we're looking at a total of 28,409 acres, um, of industrial hemp management zone area. So people are outside the indust-
Can you just go back to that just for a minute?
Sure.
I was just trying to jot it down on the, the pictures here that you sent in. So Ferndale is 19,000.
Yes, and, yeah, Ferndale is by, by far the largest area.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So for those that are looking to cultivate hemp outside an industrial management zone area and they hold, um, a commercial cannabis, uh, permit, um, we wanted to respond to that request for cannabis holders to be able to have entry into the hemp marketplace. So there's the two types of cannabis permits. We have the pre-existing and then the new. So for pre-existing, they would be able to, um, essentially swap out cannabis for industrial hemp, um, within their permitted square footage. For new, um, permit holders, if they're cultivating less than what their, um, permit type allows, they could go up to that maximum permit size or 3,500 square feet, whichever is less. Um, and to be able to notify the, uh, planning department between January 1st and, um, April 1st and apply for a zoning clearance certificate, felt like that would be a, a good break so that it's before the season and, um, the planning department is aware that they're going to cultivate hemp, for example, versus cannabis. Another- Another provision for permitting industrial hemp outside industrial hemp management zones is what we have come up, deemed an accessory use. This is kind of in response to the request for the entry for the small grower. These are identified as properties that have a home on the parcel, they are occupied by the applicant, they're within these zoning districts enumerated here, up to 5,000 square feet of cultivation, full sun, outdoor, without greenhouses or additional lighting, non-diversionary water source, planting in native soils on slopes less than 10%, and no conversion of timberland. We've also included setbacks here, 30 feet from property line, 300 from residences on adjacent parcels, and outside streamside management areas. And lastly, if people are outside the industrial hemp management zone, wish to cultivate industrial hemp on a larger scale, greater than 5,000 square feet, we've deemed this a primary use type of permit, where, this is kind of where we start to interface with the Commercial Cannabis Land Use Ordinance, or the CCLUO, where applicants would come in and apply for a permit through that existing permitting process. And it would be under those permitting allowances that the CCLUO uses for zoning and square footage guidelines. This is another thing we wanted to present and get some feedback on from the public and from decision makers about support facilities. It's going to be important for people that cultivate industrial hemp to have processing, manufacturing, distribution. We thought that it would be fair for that to be allowable for substitute for commercial cannabis, to be allowable for industrial hemp processing. And lastly, we, as part of the ordinance, we included any industrial hemp permits that fall under this ordinance to be applicable to the CCLUO cap on cultivation permits. So that would apply to any industrial hemp permits, as it would to cannabis. We have drafted a coastal area, a draft industrial hemp ordinance in the coastal zone. As you guys probably noticed on our industrial hemp management maps, a lot, a large portion of that acreage is within the coastal zone. So we've provided that draft to the Coastal Commission for their preliminary review. These are some minor changes between the ordinances. Cannabis holders are under the CCLUO and the coastal areas are, would just be applicable to new cultivation. The accessory use zoning would be limited to these zones, the AE and the RA only, and those do require a coastal development permit. Sorry, excuse me. Setbacks would also need to observe ESHA or wetlands, so environmentally sensitive habitat areas. So, some alternatives that we wanted to present tonight include things like, should we be expanding areas where cultivation is allowed? Should we be reducing areas where cultivation is allowed? Some other concerns or other things that we're still struggling with in the ordinance is how do we achieve the parity between cannabis and hemp? Do we include a site restoration requirement? Quite honestly, the regulations in regard to the control of pollen drift are really a struggle. So, we're trying to deal with something, create some sort of performance standards or some other provisions there. And then, some ideas about artisanal branding provisions, maybe some testing requirements. The state has not passed any legislation on testing requirements at this time, so we feel it's important to consider that, since this is a medicinal product. Based on some of the public feedback we've received, we've added these alternatives as well. Should we continue a moratorium on hemp for perhaps another season or two? Should we slow our ordinance development beyond where the moratorium ends and, you know, perhaps continue a moratorium? Would it be appropriate to have a pilot program to inform future requirements? There's a lot, we feel like we may not know about this new industry, so maybe a pilot program is a good idea. We held two workshops last week, kind of rolling out these draft ordinance ideas, this very kind of draft ordinance, to get some feedback, see if we were on the right track. What we did hear at those meetings is that to include a seed breeder allowance compromises the requirements for the use of feminized seeds and clones, which we were requiring for the cultivation, for the hemp cultivation. So, there's a little bit of a, some maybe provisions that we need to work out there. Concern about interaction between cannabis and hemp, and that kind of also falls into that pollen drift and disease and pest introduction in general. Would that have an impact on cannabis, even, or even on agriculture as a whole? We heard some concerns about the size and location of the industrial hemp management zones. If those areas aren't managed to ensure that there aren't male plants in kind of maybe 100 or 200 acre cultivation areas, is that going to allow for pollen drift to occur? You know, another thing we heard too is the use of strict performance standards. Maybe slow our regulatory process, use that time to determine what the economics of industrial hemp cultivation are. And federal and state regulations are really in, are forthcoming at this, at this point in time. We did hear a lot of support for industrial hemp as well, and even beyond just medicinal use, including, you know, people are interested in biofuels, textiles, and that kind of thing. And lastly, I'd just like to kind of conclude, you know, that pilot program came up again and people really wanted us to use an abundance of caution before we start, essentially allow a new agricultural industry to begin in Humboldt County. And that concludes my ordinance, or my presentation on the ordinance and public comment.
Okay. Michael?
Thank you, Chairman Morris, members of the commission. I'm thinking we should just open it up for public comment at this point.
That's where I was headed. So, without further ado, we'll open up the public comment on this, because that's what this workshop is designed to do, is to gain some information so that we can make a more informed decision. So, anyone wishing to speak on this, please approach the podium. And it looks like we've got quite a few speakers, so I would insist that you stay with your three minutes. And so, go ahead, speaker number one.
Hey, guys. I had this really nice thing written out that was going to explain a bunch of points in order, and then she gave you my list. All I can really add to what she said, absolutely, the, there's financial issues facing the hemp industry here. It's small, it's moist, the market is completely flooded. 67% of buyers in July for producing hemp were not able to find a buyer to let their, get their crops out to. The single largest segment out there in hemp performing today is produced extracts, particularly isolates and other things like this. Mile High Labs is the largest example of that. They're selling the product that they produce today at somewhere in the ballpark of half of what they were selling it for two years ago. This is a market that is dramatically experiencing commoditization, and even faster than cannabis, because the regulation space is much wider. So just from a financial feasibility standpoint in the county, it is a low percentage bet. Cannabis, on the other hand, is something that's been established here. We are famous for it. Many of the people in our rooms are betting our lives on that very much, and there's a proven track record of that one winning on the financial end. I think that will continue, and I think this is a major, major detriment that would be presented to cannabis farmers here. Cross pollination, chemicals coming in, and I can tell you, I live this exact experience every day, because I not only work with farmers from this community, but I work with farmers in Southern California who have both hemp and cannabis side by side. And every single thing she's describing, when the same farmer has control of the genetics in his hemp field next to his cannabis field, cross pollination's an issue, overspray is an issue. All of these things are happening to my customers, and what's happening is their cannabis product that would have been worth 700 to 1,000 bucks a pound is ending up being processed by us for a fraction of that, $100 a pound. 60, 70, 80, and 90% losses of profit are not something that's sustainable for almost any business, much less a business facing tax rates like cannabis now. So from a financial perspective, it's super duper troubling. And on behalf of the 200 farmers that we work with, I think there is a rather unified voice, that this would be a detriment to that community. I mean, really, she said everything I was going to say. All I can say is, I'm living this and seeing this on the financial end every day. And I would ask everyone here to take extra time and extra caution. As somebody who is in the cannabis industry and is really used to having to go fast and move quickly, this is something where you should move close and slow, because we have something really, really special here. We have the potential to create a historical legacy for doing something that we're all famous for here, and that's a really sure bet. And hemp, I really feel like, again, is a low percentage chance of success in this market. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Hayman, and I'm the interim director for Friends of the Eel River. I'm here to say that Friends of the Eel appreciates the intention of this ordinance in protecting our watersheds. Specifically, we're pleased about the requirement to use non-diversionary water sources, the prohibition on the use of imported soil, and the limitations on slope and grading. We recommend adopting the site restoration requirement as outlined in the alternatives. And we also recommend implementing restrictions on groundwater pumping. The hemp management zone lies in the lower Eel groundwater basin, which is designated a medium priority basin by the Department of Water Resources. And the county has already begun discussions of managing groundwater in the lower Eel. We support that, and we strongly support managing groundwater use countywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening again, Thomas Mulder. Now, I'm actually here for what I wanted to speak to. So I attended both those workshops last week. I thought there was a lot of good feedback. One thing I learned, that a lady in the Redway workshop was really, really adamant about, like, everyone says CBD is good, and I don't disagree with that, but she was a cancer survivor. And she argued how important it was to have the THC to open the receptors. I'm not a doctor, I'm not a scientist, but she argued that's what helped her save herself and be cured from cancer. So, the hemp, by law, doesn't have enough THC to open the receptors, so she sat there and argued for a long time about that. So I think there's something to be said. It brings up the idea that, I feel a lot of this drive, part of it was political, that pushed for the hemp thing. There's a couple BOs seats up for reelection, and part of me feels that's political push on some of those fronts. And the other is the economic downturn. With the abatement notices and everything, the mom and pop farms getting closed down, everyone saw this as a potential to be able to earn more money and make a living and stay here. I believe everyone has that right. So, the thing I've broached numerous times, let's amend 2.0, open up cottage industry, simple interim permit for a cottage grower, then you take care of that mom and pop issue. People are allowed to earn money still, make a living, they got to live there, you know, put a lot of restrictions on it. As a legal cannabis farmer, I'm terrified of hemp. I have numerous friends that talk to people that are dealing with the issue in Oregon. I don't know firsthand, but crop loss, cross pollination, his exact words, I would like to ask Joe, because I don't know this answer, but, "Oil from a seeded material tastes like hay, it's horrible." I don't know that, but that's basically, so, some people say, "Oh, well, you can extract your seeded material." Well, if it's crap product, basically, it's putting out, then, you know, we're risking something. So, with the cannabis industry, it's in its infancy in the regulated world. Let's support that. Humboldt County has been all about boom and bust, boom and bust, boom and bust. The cannabis industry is something we can support, and we can pass that on to the next generation. So let's try to support the cannabis industry, but also with the hemp thing, be very, very, very cautious. I think if you did a moratorium and then maybe a lottery for like a pilot project, I think a pilot project would be a good idea to see if it's workable or not, and make sure staff has enough time, man-hours and personnel, to properly regulate it. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Lillenia Dubois. I'm not going to, I believe in hemp, but I believe in cannabinoids. And I think that we're being a little myopic when we talk about hemp versus cannabis, when we talk about future markets and future ag. If you look at other agricultural industries, they have to deal with cross pollination. I think we need to think about cross pollination as a bigger picture, because I have genetics that were specially created to heal me. I am a cancer survivor, I'm also a spinal cordic patient. And I don't want those genetics getting crossed with my neighbor's genetics, because those genetics were built for me. When we talk about hemp and it hurting our marketplace, I think we need to think a little bit ahead and talk about cannabinoids. Right now, there is a strain that we could grow here that has what's called high CBG. That high CBG is at 64 cents per point of CBG, and THC is at 8 to 10 cents per point. So when we're talking about how it impacts our market, when we start considering the diversity of the plant as a whole, I think we need to think really carefully about how we curate our genetics here in Humboldt County as an overall conversation. Now, I agree with Thomas. I grew up here and I believe in our genetics. I believe it's our genetics that are going to elevate and save our community. But I also know that our cannabis policy has really shut out business. I created a hemp-based cosmetic line five years ago to bridge that gap. That has allowed me to create a national name for myself. That has allowed me to put myself out there freely. That same product is being created in THC locally, and it will, it's not out on the market yet, but it will be out on the market. I wouldn't have been able to diversify and start building that brand, so that when my THC brand goes, it already exists out there. People already know who that is. And we have so many product makers here locally that right now need that push. I don't know the answers, because cross pollination is a really big issue, but I have spoken to some folks in Big Ag, and apparently broccoli has the same issue, and they've found solutions. So I think we need to go look to other industries at how they deal with this. I'd also ask you to take a look at Lake County, because they have utilized the hemp policy to help move their cannabis policy to more intelligent places that help empower the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Ellie Hoops. I'm here for the Office of Tribal Attorney from the Uroch Tribe, and thank you very much. I was looking at the draft ordinance for the plan, and I noticed that the alternatives that were shared tonight did not include one of them, which was to recommend language that would require express consent to be written consent from the tribe. This is all through the CCLUO, and I believe that the tribes aren't really mentioned in any of this particular ordinance. I know much of it flows for guidance through CCLUO, but at least for accessory portion, it doesn't seem to. So we would ask that that be included. It would make it so that the two ordinance would actually mirror each other. At this point, the Uroch Tribe has managed to develop a relationship with the planning department. We've actually partnered on a lot of what has been going on in doing the regulations, and one of the ways we have done that is through building that relationship. This would leave gaps that would break the way different things are regulated between the county and the tribe. In addition to that, if you look at the Farm Bill 2018, it actually, if a hemp plan is actually submitted by a tribe, they're considered to be the regulatory agency. So this would cause another conflict, since, at least in the Uroch's position, they actually did submit a hemp plan in this particular case. So for that reason as well, in looking through the papers, it did look as though Jesse Lopez, I think he's the Tippo officer for, not sure, Bear River Band, and he had noticed that there was actually nothing in there that mentioned anything to do with the tribes either. And in addition to that, he was requesting some information. There obviously are going to be cultural sites near these areas, this is going to call us some kind of a dialogue, and if they are on tribal lands, that would just be an additional problem. So for these reasons, we would recommend that you just mirror the language that is in CCLUO, so that it's included in this and it's clear, and that there isn't any confusion around that. One of the reasons the tribe is concerned about this is simply, I'm not sure you realize this, but at this point in time, the Klamath River has really been suffering. We've had no fish for five years. So the way the tribe looks at the river is that in order for it to remain healthy, the area around there needs to remain healthy. So we're just trying to make sure that the practices that we've been developing, that we really have to say Humboldt has helped us through the planning department to protect this region, we want to continue and continue with that relationship. So we'd ask to incorporate that language. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
Ken Swawwacki, regarding your mapping in the Blue Lake area, some of those maps, those parcels were very contentious regarding cannabis on them. I'm not sure if they fall within our community district, which wouldn't be allowed in, but they are directly adjacent to Blue Lake and contiguous with Blue Lake's city limits, as far as we can tell from the mapping. I also strongly support what Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District... I'm assuming that you got copies of this letter. It should have been in the staff report. If not, I don't know, but it was brought forward before at the last meeting. I think something was brought forward, possibly didn't make the staff report, so maybe there will be further copies provided to you. But what they... Their concerns should be addressed. It's our water source out there, and that's the last thing we want to have jeopardized by anything. A lot of these areas out there are not currently irrigated. In other words, they're AE, they're farming areas, but they're not irrigated, and I don't know whether there's going to be major impacts if you're taking areas that aren't being irrigated and you're hydrologically connected to the Mad River water system out there in the basin. And so I would have some concerns regarding the water in those particular areas. I think the pilot program would be fine. I also think that your constraints, as far as what was put on your cannabis issues within the coastal zone, were sufficient to mitigate any potential problems. That was something that the Coastal Commission was very strict on, and such as such things as existing greenhouses was the main thing that you could use in the coastal zone. Of course, anything beyond that, you may find that you're going to have to go through a sequel process or something of that nature. But it was already done during the cannabis portion for those particular uses, and of course, we don't want to have to necessarily go through a long, drawn-out sequel process to avoid that and use that. I don't have any problem with not moving really fast on this. I do caution, some people have said this business is not going to be profitable, but that's not what you guys regulate. You folks regulate land use, not whether somebody wants to invest their money in something and try it and see whether it's financially viable. That's not something that I believe is the job of this, is to regulate economics, your planning uses. Thank you for my opportunity to speak on this, and I look forward to listening to what the other speakers have to say.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
Hi, John Friedenbaugh, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water. There's, I think, 14 copies there. So we did provide some input at the September 25th public meeting. Doesn't appear that any of our comments made the list up there, so I'm providing those again to you. One suggestion that we have for your ordinance in the purpose and intent, which is section 55.5.2, is simply add the words "drinking water supplies," and you consider that when dealing with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
My name is Riley Morrison. I'm a licensed cultivator. I want to thank the Planning Commission for taking their time to allow us to have public comment. Tonight, I brought in five articles that support the conversation I'm about to have about economic viability of this agricultural crop. I'll pass this. Articles just have some, you know, up-to-date 2019 harvest reports from across the country, whether it's Oregon, whether it's Iowa. I would like to, you know, start off by talking about the economic viability of a 5,000-square-foot hemp cultivation permit versus 28,000 acres of industrial hemp zone in the bottoms. To sell this to the small farmer, that 5,000 square feet is going to give them this opportunity that they are so needing to feel that they have this opportunity with agriculture, I think, is a farce. And to offer 28,000, you know, acres of production in the bottoms without any regulation of understanding the water usage, you know, for us to have sat here and talk with the permit holder and given him so much scrutiny over his holding ponds, and to be talking about 28,000 acres of unregulated hemp with a $900 permit, it just screams to me hypocrisy. So I want to bring that to your attention, that, you know, to assume an industrial hemp zone is going to work and a 5,000-square-foot small permit for a farmer is going to work, this equation is off. So I want to take this opportunity as well to promote the fact that we are all here, and the need in this community is to have economic viability for the farmers, for the small farmer. If we could take this conversation further, and as Thomas had said, you know, allow a door that small farmers can enter in a cottage industry, you know, 2,500 square feet of THC farming. Let's get these people back in line. Let's give these people opportunity. The energy that we're putting into this, you know, new commodity crop, which is a race to the bottom, this is big ag we're talking about, you know, 28,000 acres is not a small amount of acreage offered to potentially be farmed by next spring in Humboldt County. To me, that's the most terrifying statistic I've heard throughout this whole process. You know, if we're taking this much time and effort, let's really look who, you know, the stakeholders are, which are the farms and the licensed companies in this room. We have a unified front of saying that cultivation of hemp is the biggest danger to our industry right now. My recommendation is to slow this process down, to have a moratorium for cultivation, and to continue the public process and the due process that is needed in this industry. You know, the biggest... The biggest three points that I'm terrified as a small farmer are cross-pollination, pest resistance, pest outbreaks, and fungal pathogens. Monocropping hemp is what we're talking about here. 28,000 acres of hemp means more bugs are used to the IPM management, and that we're also talking about potentially, you know, drift and pesticide drift. And that's not even a conversation here. We're talking about unregulated hemp capacity. So I just want to say, slow it down. Let's keep this process going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
My name is Isaiah O'Donnell. I'm a licensed cannabis cultivator here in the county, and I also own a 100-acre hemp farm in southern Oregon in the Applegate. I'm 100% pro hemp. Hemp has the ability to change the world, and the uses are incredible. That being said, it is not suitable for Humboldt County. What I'm dealing with as a 100-acre farm is I'm on the very small spectrum of a hemp farm in southern Oregon. The Applegate, five years ago, was the equivalent of Humboldt County's cannabis industry. And when they allowed hemp in there, it absolutely ruined 30 years of genetics and breeding in the THC marketplace. In fact, there are no cannabis farms in the Applegate anymore. I invite any of you guys to come up on a tour, and I'll show you farms that have feminized seeds that are full of males. I'll show you wild hemp males growing in the river valley from cross-pollination of earlier harvest. And I can show you some of the pitfalls that we're dealing with in the industry up there. Cross-pollination is a real threat to Humboldt's cannabis industry, and we should absolutely be aware of it. I think there's two main things that this county should be looking at. The threat to what Humboldt is, which we are known as the premier producer of cannabis in the world. That is our legacy. We are not known for CBD. Cross-pollination is the threat to that. The other part of this is an economics... Is based on the economist of producing this product at scale. Right now, there's two lawsuits that have happened in Oregon. One of them was last year for $21 million between two different Oregon companies. They claimed they had 100% feminized seeds. 40% of them were males. There's another lawsuit this year between an Oregon company and a Kentucky company, again, claiming feminized seeds. 40% of them were males. If you guys need links to the articles, I'm happy to share them at a later date. I'll give you some quick little stats. Last year, there was 78,000 acres of hemp planted. This year, there's 511,000 acres of hemp planted in the U.S. That's an increase of 554%. This CBD and industrial hemp is a commodity. It's trading at about $10 wholesale per pound dry. There's a lack of drying, processing, and harvesting facilities, even in the commercial ag zone lands. The Central Valley will be the major dominator of hemp in the U.S., and the price is going to continue to fall. I'll give you some quick quotes if I can, if I can get like an extra 30 seconds. We have 91.6 acres planted. We have 1,450 plants per acre. We total 132,820 plants throughout our farm. We had 500 males or herms that we found, and we don't look for them. We're producing, we're growing for biomass, for oil. I'm a second-generation farmer. My team has over 50 years of cannabis experience between us. This is what we do. This is all that we do. Through that, we've gone out and vetted CBD companies. We found a few good ones. Seven out of our eight genetics are from Oregon CBD. They sold out. You had to pre-buy your CBD seeds six months in advance to have them. In those 100,000 plants, we've only found 100 males that we found, representing only .001%. Doesn't sound like a lot. In the other 32,000 plants, we found 450 males. This was from another vetted company that we felt good about. That came out to .01% of males in our whole field, which represents over two or three males per acre. In Oregon right now, the pollen drift, they had a rule of a four-year, a four-acre buffer. 85% of the THC farms within that four-acre buffer were cross-pollinated with hemp. Thanks.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Pat Keating. I'm a licensed farm, and I have extreme concerns about cross-pollination. And I agree with everything that's been said about that so far, and my only other addition is that I just don't think that once you enact this ordinance, you can fix it. I don't believe there's a fix. You know, like, oh, gee, this is out of control. We can fix it. I just don't think there is a fix. I think it's going to be a southern Oregon thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Good evening. Chair Commissioners, Director Ford and Staff, Tara Carver, Executive Director of the Humboldt County Growers Alliance. After much consideration, HCGA is opposed to the proposed unlimited cultivation of hemp in the proposed IMHZ and is neutral on the small-scale cultivation of hemp under 5,000 square feet on properly-owned properties. In May, HCGA supported a moratorium on hemp due to the concerns regarding pollen drift, land use, and environmental impacts. Tonight, we've heard overwhelming opposition to cross-pollination impacts, and it's getting late, so I will scratch that part of my comments. And while we believe pollen drift is our most serious concern related to large-scale hemp cultivation in Humboldt County, we have other concerns as well, which were discussed further in our written comments, which we submitted to staff on Monday. Including but not limited to hemp farms could potentially bring into the county a host of outside pests. Pesticide use and drift could put our environment and cannabis farms at risk. Overuse of limited watershed natural resources and caps, and additional county resources to enforce a program are all of high concern. We're also very curious and wonder if this ordinance would be SEQA compliant, if it's tiered off the cannabis EIR. In addition, I want it to be known very clearly that for five years, we've sat in this room and discussed the same plant with a difference of .3% THC, and the Department of Fish and Wildlife has been here for every single one of those hearings. Today, we're looking at 28,000 acres of the same plant, and yet the agency remains silent. And I would like that to be known. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker.
Hello, my name is Eric Walls. I'm a licensed cultivator in Hydesville, really close to Fortuna, as you all know. If there was this type of farming going on in Fortuna, pollination, I'm confident would devastate my farm. Like Joe was saying earlier, would completely devalue everything that I've worked so hard for, everything that we've all worked really hard for in this county over the past three to four years, would just completely go down the drain. I think without the THC farmers, the cultivators, all the other industries here, for the manufacturers, the resellers, the dispensaries, all the consumption lounges you guys are doing, all those would lose value as well. We're talking about just a terrible economic downturn that could potentially happen. We're talking about, this is a large ag bill for large hemp. This is not a small thing. This is anybody with a ton of money could come in here. We don't know these people. They don't have the same values that we have, you know, ties to the people here. I say this, it's funny because I'm not even from here, right? I grew up in San Diego. And I'll tell you right now, Humboldt County has made me something that I didn't know I could be. It really has. You come in here, and you cannot survive if you're not strong. I don't want to lose that. I want to grow THC. I want to continue to buy more farms. I would love for people to be able to have that same opportunity and economic viability as I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please.
Craig Johnson, Alpenglow Farms, Southern Humboldt County. We are a licensed cultivator. We produce THC and CBD strains distributed through California right now. We are opposed to hemp in Humboldt County due to crop drift and pest management possibilities or pest problems. As you folks know, we had an issue this summer. It wasn't with the Salmon Creek Big Bud hemp aphid. It was the hemp aphid. Oh, I'm sorry, the Salmon Creek cannabis aphid. It was the hemp aphid. So the hemp aphid is a big concern already that came down the coast. As we move forward, I think we really, really need to move slowly if you're going to look at hemp and just hold the door at the moment and give some of these other cultivators that maybe didn't have a chance or were edged out due to barriers of entry with the THC market. A lot of these, I believe the hemp permits came from Southern Humboldt, and I know my fellow farmers in Southern Humboldt, a lot of them thought they were going to have half-acre, one-acre farms, but they were pushed back to maybe 5,000 square feet. That just is not paying the bills anymore. So if we could open that up just as easily as we're going to open up the hemp, I think we would get a lot more traction and help keep this county going. And if we're going to take this closer look at hemp, let's take a little bit more time and look at our cannabis tourism because that is the key to our success. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next Speaker, please. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to participate in tonight's workshop? Seeing no one, I guess we will close the public comment section on this workshop. And I think the reason for this workshop tonight was to gain information. It was not... There's no action on it, so I'm kind of reluctant to get into a discussion until we have the final, complete public input. And so with that, unless some of the other commissioners have a problem, I guess I'll put it this way. Do any of the commissioners want to have a discussion on this tonight, or do you want to wait until we get a full measure of the public comment on this?
Can we ask any questions of staff?
We can. If you want a discussion, we can do that.
Not a discussion.
Ask a question. Yes, we can. Then we'll do that. Go ahead, Mike.
So my question is, on the hemp, I'm seeing outdoor grows only, and that's what I've been hearing here, especially with the cross-pollination. Greenhouses, what will that do or not? I'm asking of staff in regards to having the hemp grown in greenhouses only.
Yeah, the ag commissioner is in the office or in the room. I'm not sure if he's got any reports on the ability of greenhouses to mitigate the pollen drift, you know? On the face of it, it seems like a good way to go. The industrial management zone, there is an allowance for the use of existing greenhouses, and it's not proposed as part of the accessory use regulations because we are... we are trying to limit the impacts of those accessory use cultivation to, and we're doing that through the full outdoor sun requirement, and so we're not having any issues with mixed light, you're not having the, the lighting, the generator noise, or fuel impacts that you have with, with mixed light cultivation. But that, that is certainly a, a way that we could roll out a pilot program is to be very, very specific about where hemp is allowed, and if you want to limit it to greenhouses, that would seem to help mitigate the pollen drift.
I just have one, I'm sorry. Yes, I've done quite a bit of work actually in this area, and I have some concerns in terms of the pollen drift. So has there been an attempt to make a map, for example, to show where our cannabis farms are and where these sites might be? Because, I mean, there are plenty of peer-reviewed studies that I can send along if you're interested, but in, in Canada and Europe, for example, it's five kilometers, a general rule of thumb. But there's been some recent studies showing that if you're downwind, it's six times farther for an Anamophyllis species such as Cannabis sativa, wind, carried by wind. Cannabis is also, can be carried by bees, however, and so even if we did have a greenhouse scenario, we would still have some risk. And so really what it comes down to for something like cannabis, which is a leptocarctic species, i.e. the, the drift is very concentrated around the main, but the tails do go out very far. So we, we need to have a very detailed map in terms of the wind and the location of the cannabis farms and the potential areas where this might be grown. Because it, it really is a serious concern. I could give you lots of examples, like in, in Canada, we've had, you can lose all of your genetics, basically. So I, I'd just like to see a little bit more work done in that area before we moved ahead with something like this. Thanks.
I just have a comment about these areas that have been selected. Given all of the negative impacts that have been brought up tonight, I don't really see growing anything in the coastal zone or Uroch Territory, the Wiat Territory. These are very areas that are, have cultural resources, you know, Redwood National Park's right there by, by Ork. Given that they're not that great of sites anyway for growing anything, I don't think you should risk the impact to an industry that you guys have worked on, and a lot of people have invested in, to put hemp in these areas that they just don't, it's not a good fit. Maybe Blue Lake, but I don't even know if Blue Lake wants it, so, or Rio Del, you know? And I don't think we should force something on them just because we want to get into a new industry that could impact an industry negatively that you've already invested so much in. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't even go there.
Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I would just recommend that before staff spends a lot of time coming up with lots of alternatives, recommending different ways on how we can regulate this crop, we should have the discussion of whether or not we even want it in this county. Thank you.
Any other comments? John?
I just, oh, I just wanted to add to that, too, that I, I wanted to mention that, you know, if we're not looking at having hemp for fiber or for anything else, but purely for CBD, why, why wouldn't we just be using what we already have when we have some of the best CBD already?
Director.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things that we would like direction on tonight is if the Planning Commission is not in favor of moving forward with something similar to what we've presented, and if there, it ranges maybe from slowing things way down to saying, you know, maybe we don't want hemp, that rather than trying to come back and have a discussion of the ordinance, maybe have a discussion of a different-looking ordinance. The different-looking ordinance may be a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to extend the moratorium, or to simply impose a moratorium, or to create a pilot project, or, or something very different. And, and so that's part of the benefit of tonight's ability to have a workshop, is to maybe be able to articulate some of those things, if, if you're ready to do that, so that we can come back prepared for the next meeting. Otherwise, we'll come back for the next meeting to have that discussion, of course, but to the extent that we're able to maybe articulate that tonight, that'd be helpful for us to be prepared.
Well, that's the reason why I was reluctant to get into a discussion tonight, because we're going to, I don't want to fool around and make this some kind of a quasi-action item. And, you know, we, it's been noticed to have an additional meeting during which time we're going to assimilate and get some more public comment. Certainly, I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from, and based on tonight's testimony, I, I could, I guess I kind of tend to agree with you based on testimony tonight, but, you know, this is noticed for an additional timeframe. And at that time, I think it's where we need to get into a discussion based on, on, on what you'd like to see, whether than, than tonight here.
Fully respect that. One of the realities that I'm looking at is that we have a moratorium that's about to expire. And if we're going to take action on that, that's going to require board action. And I would just like to have enough time to either extend the moratorium or to, to do something else, give the board enough time to act, too. Because if we don't have some kind of action at the next meeting, we're then going into November, and there are three meetings in November scheduled for one particular project.
Well, I would think that, you know, my perception on what I've heard tonight, if we get the same outpouring of comments that we have tonight, we, it may be a fairly quick decision for us to make at next meeting.
So would it be fair, or would it, not to, forgive me if I'm being presumptuous, but to maybe bring some alternatives back for you that...
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this item before we move along? And since this is a workshop, do we need an official motion to continue?
No motion is necessary.
It was noted as such, okay. Well, based on that, we will, that is the last item on our agenda, and unless any of the commissioners have any, anyone to add, we will bring this to a, a completion. So any, any comments by the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll adjourn the October 3rd meeting of Humboldt County Planning Commission.